This is the regular meeting of the Mobile City Council, Tuesday, August 12th. Please stand for our invocation.
Ladies and gentlemen.
Pastor Tony Legere, Public Safety Chaplain, and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good morning, everyone. And let's pray together, new day. Our Father, we give thanks to you for the gift of life, for we know even our very breath comes from you. And in this morning, we arrive on this campus, pledge to honor you, to serve our community, and we pray for the ability to do so. Thank you for our leaders. We pray that you'd smile upon them, may they have clarity of mind and heart. And we ask you, Father, for your favor and our time together in this room. In Christ's name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, President Small.
Here.
Vice President Gregory.
Here.
Councilmember Penn.
Here.
Councilmember Carroll.
Here.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Here.
Councilmember Davis.
Councilmember Woods.
Here.
Statement of rules.
And good morning, everyone.
Morning.
It's good to see everybody this morning. Welcome to our August 12th, 2025 meeting. At this meeting, we do have rules. At this time, I ask if anyone have any type of electronic device, including cell phones, please at this time put on the off or the vibration position, the off or the vibration position. Interpersonated desire to address the Mobile City Council must sign in indicating the resolution, the ordinance, a public hearing, general item before entering the meeting. When addressing the council, the speaker must give his or her name. Interpersonated desire to speak to the council on another general item must contact the City Clerk's office no later than 2:00 PM the Thursday prior to the council meeting. The subject that he or she wishes to express to the Mobile City Council must be identified and pertain to the city of Mobile business. Anyone who has not given a proper note to the City Clerk's office and wishes to talk on a non-agenda item would not be allowed to address this council. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to address this council. A bell was sounded to indicate the end of two minutes. One minute remain for summarizing. The second bell indicates that your time has expired. When addressing the council, there to be no personal address to any individual council members. All statements ought to be made to the chair, who will recognize any council member who wishes to respond. To maintain decorum, there will be known to applause and/or public outcry aloud. Madam Clerk?
Approval of minutes of August 5th.
So moved.
Properly moving, second in and discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Minutes approved.
Communications from Mayor Stimson's office.
Yeah, Council President, um, I bring greetings on behalf of Mayor Stimson. He could not make this meeting, so I'll be making remarks on his behalf. But we're going to announce the aftermath of violence event. It's a Public Safety Department is hosting an important conversation about violence and trauma within our community. The aftermath of violence is set for August 14th at 5:30 PM at Seals Community Center. Dr. Ashley Williams-Hogue, founder of the Project Inspire, will lead the event. She'll cover strategies to help victims and families heal after violent events in topics like trauma counseling, victim advocacy, and crisis intervention. We will also explore conflict resolution, mentorship, and community programs. Thank Public Safety and many of our partners, some of which are the Mothers Against Gun Violence, Councilman William Carroll, the Public Safety Citizens Advisory Board, and many others that participate. The downtown street optimization, next phase of the downtown street optimization plan is beginning this week. We will be replacing 26 traffic signals in downtown with four-way stops. The new ADA ramps are going in, restriping, and new restriping crosswalks will also be going on. And all of this is to improve pedestrian access and safety. The goal is to get a better flow of traffic, safer streets, improved access to businesses in our downtown business district. This is led by the City of Mobile, based on a plan from the Downtown Mobile Alliance done many years ago. All 26 signals will begin flashing tomorrow on August 13th. They will continue for 90 days when the signals will be removed and replaced with stop signs. Help drivers adjust to the change and give us a chance to make these adjustments. We appreciate the public's patience as we make these improvements to downtown Mobile. Amtrak Mardi Gras service, less than a week away, we return to the Gulf Coast Passenger Rail Service. First run of Amtrak Mardi Gras service will be next Monday morning, August 18th. Our crews are paving and restriping the parking lot right now. This wasn't required, but the city was able to do it. And then there's a special thanks to Nick Amberger, who worked with Amtrak to help pay for this paving and restriping, so that we have a brand-new, fresh facility instead of an old parking lot with a new platform. The city and Visit Mobile working diligently with Amtrak to create a welcoming space. Lots of excitement around the first trains, many of which are sold out. Thanks to those who made it happen, Governor Ivey, the Portimobile, City Council, Southern Rail Commission, and many others that I probably could never name. Tickets and more information are available at amtrak.com/mardi-gras-service hyphenated, and nobody is going to remember that. Employee of the Month, Public Works, I'm going to call on Jennifer Green to recognize Emma Cochran as the Public Works Employee of the Month.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you.
Good night, all.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. It is my pleasure to honor Emma Cochran today. For the last three and a half years, her dedication, skill, and leadership has elevated every project that she touches. Our project managers work often behind the scenes, taking on big challenges, mastering every detail of complex projects, navigating all of our state and federal regulations, and ensuring every phase stays on track. I'm sure you've noticed her work on the Three Mile Creek Greenway Trail Project and the Stormwater Mapping Project, and it really shines as a example of her ability to blend her technical expertise with clear communication and community engagement. She's really delivering results that have a lasting effect on the city of Mobile. While she's excelling here, she's still continuing her personal goals. Emma is a PhD candidate at the University of South Alabama, further proof of her commitment to excellence in the future of our work. Emma, we are proud to recognize you today as Employee of the Month. Congratulations.
Next, I'd like to call on Sun trees, Maynard Williams, who would like to recognize Trish Prim as the Employee of the Month from the Legal Department.
Good morning, Administration, City Council. It is indeed my pleasure and honor to celebrate and recognize our very own Trish Prim as the Employee of the Month for the Legal Department. Trish has served the city with dedication for over a decade and has been an integral part of our department since 2019. Throughout her time with us, she has consistently embodied the five core values that govern our team: integrity, service, professionalism, excellence, and accountability. And she has done so with grace each and every day. In the Air Force, we have this saying, flexibility is the key to air power. And Trish lives that principle every single day we walk in that door. And it's just such a pleasure to actually work with her. Her adaptability, her positive spirit, and unwavering commitment makes her not only a valued colleague, but also a true asset to our department and the city as a whole. And it's truly been a joy to work with her, and she consistently puts her best foot forward. We know that that is the expectation, and she does it with a smile on her face every single day. And it is a great thing to witness how she is genuinely prideful in all the work that she does for the city. At this time, I would also like to share in this moment to invite her civil chief, Tralina, to also provide some additional remarks.
Thank you. Yes, Trish is our model for our core principles in the Legal Department. We search for and strive every day for professionalism and accountability and collaboration. And with Trish, collaboration means she's the only one that can find the files under their old names. So Trish is wonderful, Trish is great. I recommended Trish for this. She spent months taking up some extra slack there, didn't whine about it, didn't complain about it. And we consider Trish something special. She's a special part of our team, and we are grateful that she was selected for this position.
Congratulations, Trish.
And, Mr. President, I also would be remiss if I didn't recognize the extraordinary outstanding work done by Mobile Fire Rescue Department and their recovery and rescue efforts yesterday, working on a mosh contractor. They, uh, these guys had to face a confined rescue attempt at a, in a space dug in the ground with a 28-inch opening, 28 feet underground, with 48 inches at the base, with two men stuck at the bottom of it. They did an incredible job, were able to recover both of these men. I wanted to make sure that we recognize the incredible job that they do as a, and they really have demonstrated that they're not just a fire department, they're an all-hazards response department. There is no one else to call if they can't handle it. So from the RSA tower to these sewage lines or wherever else they have to go to help rescue people or recover people, they seem to do it, and they do it every time. And so just a shout out, if we give Chief Barry Glisten, the interim chief, a big round of applause, and hopefully he'll pass that on to us. Do you want to make any comments, Chief?
Yeah, the, so we had 29 personnel at that scene yesterday. So the amount of work and effort that it goes in to pull that kind of rescue off is huge. And it's a testament to the training, as well as just the everyday requirements that our personnel give us to the department and to the city unconditionally. So we really appreciate their efforts that they did and condolences to the family, but we are proud of our men and women that do this job every day.
And Chief, if I might, we talked a little bit at pre-conference about what happened yesterday in Princeton Woods, which is in District 7. Can you just go through how the call came in, and when the team arrived, what they found, and provide us with some more details of exactly what happened?
Yes, ma'am. So essentially, the call came in shortly after 8:00 yesterday to our 911 center, and our dispatchers dealt with a very frantic caller and tried to gather all the information that they could, make the initial dispatch. The location was very hard to find. One of our biggest pieces was the actual incident scene was probably a mile off the road back into the woods from Princeton Court Drive. And so that led to a delay on that portion, but they were able to, once they located, they were able to start getting the resources that they need back to the location. Give you an idea of the equipment that it took just to commit this rescue, it filled up a pickup truck bed twice essentially with all of the equipment. So this is a lot of effort and moving parts for our members that committed this rescue.
And I know that an investigation is still ongoing as to exactly what caused all of this, but what can you tell us about what they found when they got there? And as much as you can about the cause of what happened and that caused the tragedy? Because we know that two men lost their lives in this event.
Yes, ma'am. So essentially, what happened was there was a displacement of oxygen is what it comes down to, and an atmosphere that was not conducive to what we breathe every day. So that was our first issue that they had to overcome, and we do that with monitoring and ventilation of that space. The initial call set up that one person went down in the hole. That person never came back out. Second one went down, and then finally a third one. That third one was overcome but was able to self-rescue. And our crews immediately got him transported to the hospital. And then at that point, they started getting all the resources in place to commit the rescue in that remote location.
And again, our condolences go out to the families of the victims from this tragic accident that happened yesterday. But last week, there was also a call out to MFRD and something that we don't see that often in the city, and that is a house fire that resulted in a death. Can you go through that for us as well?
Yes, ma'am. So unfortunately, there was a fire death that, again, you said, we don't see that very often throughout the city. And either last year, we did not have any documented fire deaths. But we lead the entire state in the number of smoke alarms that we put in every year. And a lot of departments are trying to emulate what we do. We do this by going door-to-door and making sure that our citizens have the smoke alarms and, or in place that are functional. So as part of what happens when we do have a fire fatality, we set up a four-block area that we're going to essentially go out and do a small blitz, and that's going to be Thursday, starting at 4:00 and running until 8:00. Our crew members are going to be out door-to-door, making sure that those residents have first, aware of what happened just down the street from them, but also giving them a free smoke alarm and installing that while we're there. So we look to reach out to the community members.
Really appreciate you doing that. And that is in the Racine Avenue area, Mississippi, some of those areas. We'll also be putting something out on our Facebook page and in my newsletter to help promote that. But I think it's great that you all will be providing that information and the service to the people who live there, because I know anything like this is just, and you know, it affects everybody on the street, and the house is still there. It was burned, the automobile is still sitting there, burned, and you know, what used to be the carport area. So has a tremendous impact. And again, a fire death like that, really, it was a tragic accident that happened. And just wish you all the best in doing this and providing the information. So thank you to all your crew, MFRD. I mean, you can't say enough good about your guys and then the teamwork and what you all are able to do for the city and provide that kind of a service. And of course, Mobile Police were there as well on both scenes, you know, helping in every way they can. You know, just really tell everybody, thank you so much for us. And I know the neighbors appreciated the information that you all were able to provide to them.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you all. And that'll conclude the mayor's communications. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Penn. Councilmember Penn.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and thank you, President Small. Can I ask the Legacy of Hope to come down? Good morning. I have a proclamation today, whereas in recognition of Legacy of Hope, their vision, mission are for Alabama Organ and Tissue Alliance to end the weight of suffering by shepherding the gift of life to those in need of organ and tissue transplants. And whereas National Minority Donor Awareness Month is a collaborative action of the National Organ Eye and Tissue Donation Multicultural Action Group that aims to create a positive culture for organ, eye, and tissue donations to save and improve the quality of life of diverse communities. And whereas it was founded in 1996 to bring awareness to health disparities in minority communities with a prime focus on African-Americans, Hispanics, Asian Pacific Islanders, and Native Americans. And whereas during this month, national organ donation organizations highlight the need for more donors, encouraging donors' registration, as well as promoting healthy living and disease prevention. And now therefore, Councilman Cor, I, Councilman Cor Penn of District 1, and the members of the City Council hereby proclaim the month of August, National Minority Donor Awareness Month, done at the City of Mobile, Alabama, on the 12th day of August 2025. Can we give Legacy of Hope a big hand?
Good morning, good morning. My name is Dr. Latoya Bishop, and I serve as the multicultural educator at Legacy of Hope. And he took all the words away, so I don't have to worry about saying anything on that. But I do want to say thank you so much to the city of Mobile, because when we sent this information out, the city of Mobile was the very first one to say, yes, we have your proclamation, yes, you can come to the city council to present. So I want to thank you all for doing that. So it made my drive driving down from Birmingham worthwhile this morning for this very beautiful proclamation. And I want to let you know that we do have members of our ambassador team and also my colleagues that are here, just to make sure that people know that organ donation is definitely important. But this month, we really want to focus on the minority population, because if you haven't found out, one person can save up to eight lives through organ donation. So we want to encourage everyone, please, to register. It does not matter your race, it does not matter your age, it does not matter your gender. One person can save up to eight lives. And we really want to put a focus on this particular month, because if you look at the waitlist, we have a lot of people that are waiting for a transplant. Of those people that are waiting for a transplant, about 70% of those individuals are people of color. So therefore, we really want to make sure that we have a conversation. We invite you to invite us to your schools, community events. And we also have one of my colleagues that are here, that's here in Mobile, that can definitely attend events. We go to churches, schools, one or two people, it does not matter. We definitely just want to have that conversation. And we also have a donor mom and also a donor wife that's here as well, too. So I want to recognize them. Hope, do I want to say anything real quick? The bell hasn't dinged, so I think I'm within my time period. So again, thank you all so much, and thank you for making me look skinny on the picture.
Mr. President, I have a question.
Yes.
When you, the percentage you gave, did you say that 70% of the people waiting for transplants are persons of color?
It's a very large percentage. So let's look at, let me give a very general number. If we had 1,000 people here in the state of Alabama that's waiting for a transplant, of that 1,000 people, I would say about 900 or maybe 850 are waiting for a kidney. Of that number that's waiting for a kidney, 65 to 75% of those individuals are people of color that are waiting for a transplant. But if you look at the registry, we don't have that many people of color that are registered to be an organ donor. So therefore, we want to increase the number of people that are registered, but also to let them know, hey, we're at the top of the list that are in need of a transplant. Let's see if we can save lives. And my shirt says that all one organ donation can save a person's life, so yes.
Thank you very much for coming down to Mobile today.
Yes, thank you so much. I appreciate that. I welcome another visit at any given time.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Adoption of the agenda.
Second. Properly moving, second in and discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Agenda's adopted.
Appeals. We have requests for wave the noise ordinance on February 14th on Government Street and October 25th in Public Safety Memorial Park.
So moved.
Second.
Properly moving, second in and discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Appeal passes.
Public hearings. Today is a public hearing to fix costs for demolition of the structure at 5671 Bob Street.
This is a public hearing for this particular said item. Is anyone present that would like to address this council on this particular said item? If not, this public hearing is closed.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council, Felicia Johnson.
Good morning. My name is Felicia Johnson. I'm here to address the council. Based on the council's investigation and the summation of the public allegations by former Chief, Chief Paul Prime. I would like to ask the council, is there any council member, the mayor is not here to be included, who has not read the investigator's summation of the public allegations made by Mobile Police Department Former Chief Paul Prime in its entirety? Is there a council member, including the mayor, who's not here to speak, has listened to it audibly, who has not listened to it audibly in its entirety? President Smalls, please clarify the contract that the city council approved for work to be performed. Was it to be performed by 321Z or 321Z Insights or both?
Well, you know, this is an ongoing investigation, and any comments will be coming from the city attorney.
Can he answer that question?
If he desires to speak on it. Are you finished with your comments? Go ahead and finish with all your questions, and if he decides to go ahead, he'll go ahead.
Is there a councilman and the mayor who's not here to speak who did not read the approved contract? Is there a council member who disagrees with the investigator's findings that Commander Levy did have criminal activity in his pattern of behaviors? Is there a council member who does not agree that Commander Levy's pattern of behavior for concealment, deception, appearances of approval, and signature fraud, evasiveness, and the likes are attributes of corruption and illegal ethics? Councilman Smalls, what is the source for the $92,000 payment for Ms. Baker? Is that to be answered by the attorney?
Again, this is an ongoing investigation.
Okay.
Case.
Oh, right. Does, according to the investigator, he says access to, in this contract. Does that mean that this access is to inmates or prisoners? Is this access to the elderly? Is this access to the youth? And is this access to category clergyman? I'm Felicia Johnson, and according to your organizational chart, you answer to, the city council has this organizational chart that the council and the mayor answer to the citizens of Mobile. The citizens of Mobile, we, the people, have spoken today, and let our words be heard, boys, be heard in this investigation. And I seek for further higher investigation to the Department of Justice that Commander Levy be held accountable for his pattern and continued behavior of corruption and the bad appearance on this city council and the departments. Thank you.
Again, just to remind the public that this is an ongoing lawsuit that is going on in the city of Mobile.
So, Mr. President, if I may, thank you for the deference. Want to make sure I give some context and some background to answering your questions, but also the comments that have been made. We do have ongoing litigation that does involve some of these issues. The investigations are closed, but the subject of litigation, a number of these things are still ongoing. But I do want to hearken back to overall global answers, because we do answer to the public, and it's important for us to tell the story, the truth, and the whole truth. The entire truth here is that the 321Z contract and the initial complaints about that contract were patently false, right? We investigated the council, commissioned an investigatory process, which is empowered to do. The mayor's office investigated through my law firm. Also, we also had OPR independently go through and look at it. And then we also turned it over to the Attorney General's office. None of the initial allegations were found to have any truth in law or fact. What the independent investigator that the council hired ultimately found is that there was a document dealing with that contract, not the contract itself, but a document that was signed and then ultimately affixed to the final contract. The council did nothing wrong in approving that contract. The council and the city did nothing wrong in making sure that money was paid. We found through four separate processes that it was a legitimate company with a legitimate purpose, right? Now, what ultimately the independent investigation that the council yielded found was there was, in their opinion, some wrongdoing. We don't necessarily agree that that happened, but that's what happened. I mean, the facts are the facts. We ultimately turned that information over to the District Attorney's Office, which is the proper prosecutorial body, and there were no charges brought. Also have to remember that the Attorney General's office was informed, once again, I say this loudly, to the entire public. Everything that was alleged at the front end of these investigations was patently found to be false, right? So if there's one single operation that has cost this city more money than any other investigation, it would be the source of these allegations that were patently false.
Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Creola Ruffin.
Good morning to the city council. My name is Creola Ruffin, and with me is Mr. Tim Kaufman. Good morning to the city council. My name is Creola Ruffin, and with me is Mr. Tim Kaufman, president of the Gulf Coast Ethnic Inheritors Jazz Festival. Two weeks ago, the Gulf Coast Ethnic Inherited Jazz Festival celebrated twenty-seven years of dedication to keeping jazz music alive for future generations. In doing so, we brought in several that we gave awards to and honored as jazz legends of the city of Mobile, born and raised in Mobile, and two graduated from Williamson High School, of which one of those was Mr. Fred Erby, who is on the cover of Jazz Times Magazine here, which is one of two international jazz magazines in the world. Also, this is a special edition, and Jazz Times felt that Mr. Erby was awarded fifty years of his founding of the Howard University Jazz Ensemble, who is an international college-known jazz ensemble. So we pay homage to Mr. Erby III, and we are here today to state that in order to have a arts and cultural community in the future, we must acknowledge the history, especially the history of the makers of history in arts and culture in the city of Mobile. And that's why we are here to pay homage to one of your own who followed us through those two weeks of jazz culture, and that would be...
Good morning, counsel. Good morning, President. Usually I see people here being presented, you guys presenting with some recognition of something that they've done towards the city of Mobile. Well, we are going to turn that around today. We want to honor one of your own. Counselman Penn, would you come forward, please?
Counselman Penn stepped in and did some stuff that was amazing for us. It really helped us in our situation. And when there was a problem that came about that was unexpected, he went above and beyond to resolve the issue and make everything right. And Counselman Penn, we just want to thank you for being supportive of the Gulf Coast Ethnic Inheritors Jazz Festival and doing everything that you do for this community. And we want to present this to you in honor of that and let you know that we really do appreciate it. And this says to Corey Penn, committed city councilman to the arts and cultural community, Gulf Coast Ethnic Inheritors Jazz Festival twenty twenty-five. Thank you so much, sir.
Well, Mr. President, this is a surprise to my counsel. Thank you, Ms. Ruffin. Thank you, Mr. Tim. It's amazing. I had the opportunity to experience two nights of the Jazz Festival, and it was legends in the city of Mobile, legends. And many of them didn't even have an opportunity to come and have them perform back in the city of Mobile. And so they value being back and being honored and celebrated. And I just, I'm committed to making sure that we honor them, and we got to get them back and make sure that they perform in the city of Mobile. And you have my word that I'm doing whatever I can to make that happen. Thank y'all so much.
Thank you.
James Williams.
Morning.
Morning.
My name is James Williams.
Turn the light on.
Good morning, Councilperson. My name is James Williams. My friends call me JW. The city of Mobile continues to grow and has the potential of being a destination of choice by many. There are areas of default that need to be corrected, mainly the Mobile Housing Authority. Congress sets the laws that regulate HUD, the federal agency which the Mobile Housing Authority falls under. The Mobile Housing Authority fails to maintain quality public housing. Approximately hundreds of federal laws that regulate the public housing program have been violated. This needs to be corrected. A recovery agreement was put in place by and between Mobile Housing Authority, HUD, and the city of Mobile, Alabama. This agreement gave the city council of Mobile and the mayor the oversight over the Mobile Housing Authority and the discharge of its duties. This binding agreement was put in place January the twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one. An example of some violations are Federal Code of the Federal Register eight-eight-six-point-three-two-three concerning how to maintain, operate, and inspect public housing. Section five-point-seven-zero-three involves the national standards for safe housing inside and out to be free of hazards. Another CFR of twenty-four, subtitle B, chapter nine, part nine-five-four regarding tenant participation, and the list goes on. Public housing is an essential part of our society, and any one of us may need that assistance. Let's ensure that its integrity stays in place. Conditions at Parking Tower, RV Taylor, and Thomas Jane Place have been neglected for years. Citizens' complaints have been dismissed, causing many to leave out of frustration and intimidation. Strangely, a historic black community is up for grabs. Approximately three-hundred-and-ten million dollars has been sent from HUD to the Mobile Housing Authority, operating budget from twenty-twenty-one to present. And my question is, what happened to the money for improvements?
Mr. Dave.
Mr. President, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Williams, for coming down today. We've had a number of speakers, you included. And again, I appreciate you coming to visit us, but we've had a number of speakers come down, speak to the city council about the public housing. I want to make one thing absolutely clear. The Mobile City Council has absolutely no control over public housing in the city of Mobile or anywhere else. You're talking to the wrong person, people. City council has no control over public housing. Thank you, Mr. President.
Yeah, I would like to dito behind my colleague, and my question is, and again, I mean, we do represent those residents, but it's almost only so much that we can do. Have y'all ever, have you ever went to the Mobile Housing Board and asked them these same questions?
My question was addressed to the city council. As I recall, under the Zogby Act, that the city council is the governing body for the city, and the mayor is its executive. And under the recovery agreement, there's a binding agreement that was set in place because of the deficits of HUD, that the city of Mobile, HUD, and Mobile Housing were to work together to comply with these violations. And that's, that's a federal contract between the three agencies. So the city council is a part of them. It's oversight there. If you read the agreement, it states it's binding that the city is responsible.
So, Mr. President, let me help out.
About three areas there, and it's in the agreement if you read it.
Let's hear it from the city attorney.
So, let me explain two things. Let me echo your comments, Mr. President. We have no governing authority over the housing board.
No sidebar conversation, please.
So we have no governing authority. And this recovery agreement that everybody wants to bring up is no longer in existence. Like, I know people necessarily didn't know that, but the way that we got into the recovery agreement was threefold. So when the housing board was found to be a failing agency, the ineptitude of the people asking us to enter the agreement was the real problem. We have no governing authority over the housing board, and that was the issue. So the people who were forcing that agreement kept trying to give us authority that state law and federal law do not give us, Zogby Act or otherwise. Anybody to say anything about us having governing authority and it has to deal with Zogby Marietta, wrong. Okay, that's number one. Number two, we've completed the recovery agreement, and we just hadn't been very public about it, but that's because we have so limited authority. The last thing is that number, that three-hundred-and-ten million dollar number is probably really off as far as what's being funded. It has nothing to do with the recovery agreement. The crux of the recovery agreement was HUD and some of the local people trying to force the city to enforce parameters, and they wouldn't let the funding flow, any of the funding flow, until we entered into it and tried to assist. And so I know this council and the mayor's office has made every effort to try to assist in moving public housing forward, but back to your key point is, we have no governing authority over what they do, not their funding, not who they hire, none of those things. The only thing that we have statutory ability to do is, is make those appointments. And other than that, it is a complete independent body, which is why there's been so much back and forth. Glad to answer your questions, Mr. President.
Well, hold on. I asked during the statements of rules, I said, no undue applause or public outcry loud. No more sidebar conversation. If I hit this gap, it's going to be thirty days for the people in the second row. I'm sorry, Mr. Penn.
Thank you, Mr. President, which I agree. How you doing, Mr. Williams? And thank you for coming down. And I know your friends call you JW. You always come down and tell us that. Thank you so much for coming down and sharing your concerns. I think it's very vital that you have the opportunity as a constituent. I agree with my colleagues that we don't have governing authority, but we also, but we do, one thing we have, we can be an advocate. We can ask questions. So if you have any questions that you would like to submit to me, I will also submit and try to get any answers that's possible. So if you go to council, send an email to councilone@cityofmobile, any questions that you just stated, I'll do my best to try to get those answers for you.
I appreciate it. All right, thank you. And again, I do encourage you to go to the housing board meetings. They have their own, just like we have our board for the city of Mobile. It's a board for the housing board. Okay? All right. Thank you so much.
I have one other thing. Would the city council be available assisting us in those endeavors in view of the fact that at some point the council was a part of this agreement, and if we needed some assistance as it relates to particular facts pertaining there regarding this, would the council be available to assist us?
As Councilman Penn had stated earlier, just contact us, and you know you can contact me. But again, we don't have no authority over the Mobile Housing Board, but we will be our activists for you all as much as we can.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Freddie Wheeler.
Freddie Wheeler, eighty-four oh five, Mobile, Alabama, three-six-six-nine-five. Mayor Stimson, Council President Small, and city council. Thank you for allowing me this time. I come before you today to say thanks for your, for the leadership that you exhibit on a daily basis and your efforts on behalf of the citizens of this city. Mayor Stimson, thanks for guiding the city for the past twelve years and your administrative staff, past and present. You have always managed to have a very capable people working to make our city a better place. I particularly want to say thanks to the current chief of staff, James Barber, Joe Snowden, Ricardo Woods, Shonda Williams, Neff Amberger, Bob Lasky, Chief Randy Jackson, interim chief, Glisten. And all of these folks come to work every day to work, make Mobile a better place for all of us. I wanted to say also thanks to downtown Keisha Brown, Candace Cooksey, and Ms. Lisa Lambert. Y'all are outstanding. I want to say thanks to the current city council because just over two years ago, you voted unanimously to allow us in West Mobile to decide if we wanted to become a part of Mobile. And on July eighteenth, we voted to do just that. On August twenty-six, many of us will vote for the first time in city of Mobile elections. So many times, I watch city council meetings, and people come to tell you what's wrong with Mobile. I'm here to remind people what is right. The city keeps improving. It keeps getting better each day. Many things are right. The miles of asphalt that have been laid over the past few years are amazing, and I dare say this will continue to happen. Each of you have improved numerous parts within each of your districts. Each of you have made work to make homes more affordable, and everyone continues to answer your phones and answer questions citizens have at all hours of the day, most times at the cost to you and your family. The future is bright. The addition of downtown airport, the new river bridge, the expanding cruise lines, and other opportunities such as finishing Brookley by the Bay. Before I left the oil industry in twenty eighteen, one of my jobs was to look forward at future needs and resources, and the hardest was replacing institutional knowledge that was lost. I hope this election cycle, people will know that those seated today need to continue so we don't lose that institutional knowledge. They have shown, at least to me, to be a very cohesive team. They are willing to work together to move the city forward, and I hope that there is someone to step forward and replace the knowledge being lost with Councilman Davis. Thank you, sir. Finally, I want to challenge, finally, I want to challenge my fellow city residents to do your...
Councilman Dave gave you one more minute.
Finally, I want to challenge my fellow city residents to do their part. City officials can only accomplish so much. Start by picking up trash on your way home and place it in the receptacle that the city provides, and we'll pick up. God bless the policemen and the firefighters who protect us, and God bless this council. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Mr. Dave.
Mr. Wheeler, thank you this morning for driving halfway across the county to talk to us. We certainly appreciate it. As you point out, we sometimes get some excess criticism down here, and it's nice to have someone come in and pat us on the back. But I would like to thank you for the work you did, you and the other people in that part of the, what is now the city, that were annexed in, that supported the annexation, spent a lot of time talking to your neighbors and getting it to the point where we could, where we could actually enact that annexation. You were one of the key players in that, and that was very, very important to the city of Mobile, and thank you for everything you did.
Mr. President.
Yeah, Mr. Wood.
Thank you, Mr. Wheeler. Thank you for coming down. Obviously, two week or a week before my special election was the annexation vote, and you know, all the work that you did leading up to that and the people that are now part of District Six. The work that you've done is just tremendous. So thank you for what you did for annexation. But also, too, whenever you came into the city, you didn't just stop. So I greatly appreciate that. Thank you for the feedback you give me on a consistent basis. And then also, too, thank you for your willingness to serve. You are our District Six rep on the Solid Waste Authority Board. So I want to say thank you, and you are a prime example of exactly finding, finding things to get involved in, representing the city. And I'm very grateful that you're now a citizen of the city of Mobile as of two years ago. So thank you. Thanks for all you do.
All right, thank you. Madam Clerk.
Reggie Hill.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk.
Obviously, two weeks, or a week before my special election was the annexation vote, and, you know, all the work that you did leading up to that, and the people that are now part of District 6, the work that you've done is just tremendous. So thank you for what you did for annexation, but also too, whenever you came into the city, you didn't just stop, so I greatly appreciate that. Thank you for the feedback you give me on a consistent basis, and then also too, thank you for your willingness to serve. You are our District 6 rep on the Solid Waste Authority Board, so I want to say thank you, and you are a prime example of exactly finding things to get involved in representing the city, and I'm very grateful that you're now a citizen of the City of Mobile as of two years ago. So thank you. Thanks for all you do.
All right, thank you. Madam Clerk?
Reggie Hill.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. To the citizens and stakeholders of Mobile, greetings. Reggie Hill is my name. I rise today to continue these pertinent conversations related to city business. Before I begin, I would like to extend and extend the hand of gratitude and express my appreciation for Ms. Laura Engel, her service to the city. I wish her well in her next endeavor. She will be sorely missed. Let's look, please, at this first component, the budget. I'm asking that someone please have the political fortitude to hold this over and actually pass something that would prevent it from being approved during an election cycle year. While we have two people that are kind of already affirmed, the super majority of the city has still not voted, and so the interest of the public may not be with those who are seated here now, and they should have the opportunity to approve the next budget. Let's look at this housing component. I'm grateful for Mr. Williams coming down. I don't have to get too deep into this recovery agreement piece, but I will remind you, and it's something that Attorney Woods pointed out, and I'm glad that he did, the appointment comes from the administration, and the approval of a board member comes from a sitting council. So I understand how you can say you're not having involvement. And then we just saw something in District 2 at Jefferson Place where Mr. Carroll stepped in and helped resolve a matter, so I don't understand why you're telling us that you all don't have any involvement or any oversight. Now, the thing is, maybe it takes us sounding an alarm, maybe you've been napping on what's going on, but the idea to say that you're not involved with it, that can be further from the truth, and we need to understand our responsibility in that. Let's look, please, at these contracts. About two years ago, I think this was dealing with Chapter 34 and Chapter 14 of municipal code, there was an ordinance that was not passed, which would have allowed 50 to 100-plus thousand dollar contracts to be going through without becoming a part of the agenda. Yet each week in the preconference meetings, we take time and we waive the rules or whatever for these contracts that are under $50,000. This is just another way of bypassing what the administration wants to do and showing how this group can be considered rubber stamps. I don't think it's advantageous or prudent for our budget if we do anything that's over a penny and not bring it to this, but we'll have to talk about this later, even reviewing the DVE designation since the 2020 census. Let's look, please, at this public safety component. Until you've been tased, given an illegal citation, have your privacy invaded, have your communication medium infiltrated, been charged unlawfully, just done basically just inhumane, you wouldn't understand the importance of Chapters 38 and 46 of the Mobile Municipal Code. There should be a report from the Mobile Municipal Court that we have not received since 2009 that's supposed to be happening every month, and maybe we can get rid of the backlog. We need to have sensitivity training, whereas we went to courts and had to spend months and years, of course, mind you, to get things resolved, where we found that the police department was acting unprofessionally, which could have been resolved if we had the proper training inside of Chapter 46 of the municipal code. So these are little things that are being missed, but they have a huge impact on the quality of life of the citizens of Mobile. So I'm going to send some information over to the city clerk. We've done this before. Hopefully this time you will pay attention to these matters and get these results that we need, but then we know the town has done a lot, but thank you for your input. We'll continue this next week.
Mr. President.
Mr. Carroll.
May it be stated that I do appreciate being recognized as helping to resolve some of the issue at Jefferson Place, but it needs to be stated that in the research and inspectors going out, the housing board has no affiliation at Jefferson Place, nor do they have any vouchers at Jefferson Place. So that is not a housing board property. The property is owned by Millennium sole outright with no influence by the housing board. So let's make sure that we keep the responsibility in the correct place when we're dealing with an issue that is sensitive to citizens in the district and the community. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Carroll. Madam Clerk?
Resolutions held over 011050 authorize agreement with Neil Schaefer for construction, engineering, and inspection services for the innovating St. Louis Street project. 011051 authorize independent contractor services agreement with Thompson Engineering. 081054 approve purchase order to Vulcan for signpost for traffic engineering. 091055 transfer funds from capital improvement fund project to the motor pool fund for vehicle purchases. 601056 authorize settlement agreement and release of claims.
So moved.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded and in discussion. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Item passes.
Consent resolutions being introduced 031060 through 601064.
By council rules, these resolutions, move to waive the rules on these resolutions.
Second. Properly moved and seconded and in discussion. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Rules waived, Madam Clerk?
031060 appoint April Boudreau to the Mobile Museum of Art Board. 401061 fixed costs for demolition of structure at 5671 Bob Street. 601062 and 1063 approve and award a special bonus to the engineering and infrastructure employee of the month and the officer of the month. 601064 determine an appropriation to Mobile Bay Area Veterans Commission of Public Purpose and Approved Payment.
So moved.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded and in discussion. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Resolution passes.
CFP resolutions being introduced 091065.
By council rules, this resolution will be laid over for one week.
Resolutions being introduced for the first time 011066 through 311078.
Move to waive the rules for immediate consideration of resolutions 08-1067, 08-1069, 08-1070, 08-1071, 08-1072, 08-1073, and 21-1076, as well as 31-1078, with the rest of these being laid over for one week.
Second. Properly moved and seconded and in discussion.
Yes, sir, Mr. President.
Mr. Reynolds.
This policy, or, you know, this sort of trend of us waiving the smaller expenditures of the city, there was a comment made earlier regarding an ordinance that was produced to us earlier in the year, a year or so ago, and that ordinance would have basically barred from these things showing on our agenda at all, and I think most of us, if not all of us, feel like it's important that we have line of sight even to these small expenditures, but we also reserve the right for any one of us to object to any of these items, and typically these items are just like they are, very mundane things that go to the operation of the city. So I want to say thank you. I'm glad that we're handling this business in this way. I think it's more efficient for the people that we represent.
In other discussions. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Rules waived, Madam Clerk?
081067 approve purchase order to Gulf State Distributors for respirator asked for MPD. 081069 approve purchase order to Norlab for tracing dye bags for public works. 081070 approve purchase order to Power DMS for annual subscription for policy management software. 081071 approve purchase order to United Rentals North America for trench shoring boxes. 081072 approve purchase order to Vertiv Corporation for maintenance service for power supply units. 081073 approve purchase order to Wire Surveying for boundary line topographic survey and utility line location for 1668 West I-65 Service Road South. 211076 authorize contract with Thompson Engineering for engineering consulting services. 311078 authorize the mayor to apply, accept, and receive grant assistance from the Department of Homeland Security, FEMA, in support of the fiscal year 25 port security grant program.
So moved.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded and in discussion. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Item passes.
Announcements.
District Fire, Councilman Davis. No announcements. District One, Councilman Penn.
Thank you, Mr. President. This past week, I want to give a big shout out to the National Boy Scouts of America. They presented this whole council with the Whitney M. Young Junior Service Award, so congratulations to my colleagues for supporting the youth in our city from every aspect, from budget to discretionary to doing, going out and talking to young people throughout our communities. So congratulations to my colleagues, and also just want to give a reminder, on Tuesdays, we have convo with Corey, and this is an opportunity for students to learn about leadership, government, and making a difference in their communities from 8:30 to 1:00 p.m. every Tuesday. So if you know a young person in our community from high school or college that would like to be a part, they can email councilone@cityofmobile.org to sign up. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Penn. District Six, Councilman Woods.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just will be brief. Just want to remind District Six that on September 18th at 5:30, we'll have a district-wide community meeting at Oak Park Church. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Woods. District Four, Councilman Reynolds. District Two, Councilman Carroll. No announcements. District Seven, Vice President Gregory.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a reminder, we spoke earlier about the free smoke alarm installation that will be going on in the Racine Avenue community, so be on the lookout for that. We'll also have the information on our Facebook page and in my newsletter. Also coming up this Friday at the Charles Wood Mobile Japanese Gardens, we will be cutting the ribbon on this side of the Greenway Trail. If you have driven down Ziegler Boulevard and looked at the Japanese Garden site, you have probably seen a lot going on there with a lot of construction and improvements. Well, this Friday, we will officially open this side of the Greenway Trail. The gardens is the trailhead for the Greenway Trail from the west side going toward the east. It is a wonderful improvement. You need to come and tour the gardens if you have not seen it before. This will be at 9 o'clock at the Charles Wood Japanese Gardens for the ribbon cutting. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Gregory, and greetings to the citizens of District Three. On last week, the city council had passed a contract to demolish the old South Brookley School, which is located on Barkin Boulevard and DIP, making way for the new community center, and the citizens have been asking about a final walkthrough because they had went to school at South Brookley School, where that final walkthrough will be held on Monday, August 25th from 4 to 6 o'clock p.m., inviting all guests, the alumni of South Brookley School, to come out to do your final walkthrough. And again, more announcements will be coming in a couple of weeks ahead. Everything from the administration.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded and in discussion. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? This meeting is adjourned.